This is Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. I'm going to get us started with a roll call of commission members, and then I will turn it over to Chairman Hallstead for this evening. So I've got Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Scott Hallstead.
Here.
Matt Hutt Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
James Ratcliffe. Just want to check. All right, we are not seeing James. If anyone sees James pop in, feel free to let me know if I miss it. There's some, Mike Walsh.
Here.
Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Okay, and I'm going to note for the record that Ena St. James is absent tonight, as is Mike Krabulas. They had let us know in advance. So out with that. Scott, it's all yours.
Thanks, Shannon. Welcome, everybody, to the July 25th, 2022 Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. I'd like to, I should say, I'm Scott Hallstead. I'll be Chair tonight in place of Ena St. James, who's absent. I would like to quickly welcome Matthew Bandle to the Commission. Congratulations. We're happy you're on the team. And I think we're going to be putting you into service right away here. So for Matthew and for Mike Walsh, we're going to have both of you as voting members today, filling in for Ena and Mike.
Sounds good.
Great. Thanks, guys. Matt, Matt H., I guess we got to do Matt H. and Matt B. now. Could you read the legal notice for us, please?
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, July 25th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Patrick Foss, application for special permit to raise poultry, 17 duck cents, for property located at 325A Scott Swamp Road, R30 Zone. Carrier Holdings LLC, application for four lot re-subdivision of 114 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone. 402 Farmington Ave LLC, application for special permit for blasting at 400 Farmington Ave, BR Zone. Town of Farmington, application for zoning text amendment to modify Article 2, Section 11, to add church as a special permit use to the business restricted BR Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website listed here, and a copy of this proposal is online at the link listed here, or by calling the Planning Department of Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Data Farmington, Connecticut, this 7th day of July 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ena St. James Chair.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
And I believe James Ratcliffe, were you, did you join us?
I am here. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so. It's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So moving on to new business, we'll start with SignSource.
Okay, I believe the representative for SignSource is on. If you could explain to the Commission, introduce yourself and your, provide your address, and then explain to the Commission what's your, what the application is regarding this evening.
Perfect. Thank you. First, I apologize. My computer doesn't seem to find my camera tonight. So basically, what we're looking at here is the Farmington, let me get the exact name, Farmington Valley condo association, Farmington Village Association, sorry, that's the name. It's a condo association of businesses. They're looking to replace their sign. It's on Main Street, 250 Main Street. As you've got images there, I see scrolling up. They're looking to just better identify in a little bit more space so that all eight businesses can have, all eight condos can have some space on that sign. And I guess unrelated with, they're looking to do mailboxes as well, but I guess that doesn't apply here.
Correct.
So I didn't know what kind of information we need to talk about, about the sign. But every, all of the panels of the sign, you see the two posts, those are pressure-treated posts, suitable for burying in the ground. All of the panels, like where the 250, 254, that backer panel is solid PVC, as well as the individual panels are solid PVC with an aluminum trim. And just a simple print, laminated print as the lettering.
The location is the same, is that correct?
Location is the same or within a foot or two of where the current one is. Just in case that we can't get the old posts out of the ground, I don't think that's going to be an issue, but
Okay.
we may have to go right next to them if we can't get them out of the ground as well.
Yeah, it has to be completely located on this, on their property. Illumination?
They're using, as far as I know, they're using the same lights that are already there. That's why we're staying in the same location. All right, thank you. Questions from Commissioners? Let's start with Patrick.
Oh, yeah, what is, did I miss that? What is the height of the sign?
The height of the sign is just under six feet, so 71 and a half inches to the top of the sign. And then another, what is it, 30 inches below ground, I believe? Yeah, another 30 inches below ground.
Okay, yeah, so that sits pretty much on the ground.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned lighting. So, yeah, you're aware that if you change lighting, you have to come back?
Correct, yes. And that's, I'm not doing any of the lighting, and they were, you know, they said they were going to maintain the lighting the same as they had it.
Thank you.
Also, Patrick?
Oh, yes, yeah, I said, "Thank you." Yep, thank you. Sorry, how it came through. Sorry.
Thanks, Patrick. Matt?
No, no questions for me.
Liz?
Just so the sign is basically in a flush with the ground, is that correct?
Yeah, the bottom, the green line that you see across there is the ground. So it's going to sit down flush on the ground. You won't see any of the posts. The posts will be contained inside the sign and underground.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. And Matthew? Bandle?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, and James?
No questions here.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So can we have a motion in a second?
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier. I make the motion to approve the sign application to replace a detached tenant sign at 250 Main Street by SignSource.
Matt Hutt Wagner, second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any other thoughts, Commissioners? See a lot of head nods now. All right, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, applications accepted, approved. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night. You, too. All right, moving on to Farmington Land Trust.
Yes, and I know Peter Dorplein, I know you're logged in. I've tried, you need to accept the request to be promoted to a panelist. There you go. And then you should be able to address the Commission regarding the application.
Okay, thank you very much. Peter Dorplein. I'm a member of the Farmington Land Trust Board of Directors and Chair of the Land Trust Sign Committee. And with me as well, we just fixed up. And with me as well is Steve Nelson. He's also a member of the Land Trust Board, and he heads up the Land Stewardship Committee. This application, sign application, is for 11 signs to identify our major properties. Four of the signs are 24 inches wide. These are properties that have public access hiking trails. And the other signs, the other seven signs will be 18 inches wide. Yeah, I have a PowerPoint, but probably just as easy, Shannon, I just wanted to slide through the, these. This is a diagram of the, of the signposts. The height for all but two of the signs will be under the six-foot-tall maximum. The two exceptions are the Bancroft Memorial Parcel and the Powers Parcel. The sign will be posted downgrade in order to get the sign, the top of the sign panel to be at the same level as the edge of the pavement. We boosted the height of the signpost by two feet. Let's see. I also mentioned that a sign has already been approved by the Commission as part of the site plan for the restoration of the Wilcox Bushley Homestead on Popper Mine Road. So summary of the height and dimensions, area, materials. I think the important thing is, I've mentioned that we are going to be below that six-foot level for the signs. And in terms of square footage, the 24-inch-wide sign will be less than three square feet, and the 18-inch-wide sign, less than two square feet. The signposts will be made out of four-by-four pressure-treated lumber, and will be using a metal laminate for the, for the sign panel. And then beyond that, I want to keep rolling. We have site plans for each of the locations. I don't know if you want to go through all of them.
I think we will for the record, Peter, if we can. Thank you.
So this is the Bancroft Memorial Parcel. This is one of the exceptions, rather than being sign height will have to be seven feet because, two feet taller because of the downgrade off of Farmington Avenue before. Okay, Mountain Spring Nature Trail is actually showing two different signs, but the Mountain Spring Trail or Nature Trail is towards the bottom. And then the Roush Parcel sign towards the top. The Mountain Spring, because it has a trail, is 24-inch, and the other one is 18-inch. Next. Slatter Valley Road Parcel. They're working on a trail on there. It's an old historic road. It dates back to colonial times. And so that'll be a 24-inch sign. Coles Parcel, I think everybody knows the trail along there. So we'll be putting it, the sign will be set back quite a distance from Meadow Road because that's where our property begins. Now we're getting is the 18-inch-wide signs, Slatter Wildlife Preserve on West District Road. Maxim and Conflin Parcels on Old Mountain Road. The Douglas Mount and Zip Parcels along the River Bike Path, Farmington River Bike Path. Powers Parcel on Eli Road, north of the Jefferson's Crossing. The Stedman Parcel in the center of town on Main Street, opposite the bank. Little Reservoir, Reservoir and Diamond Glen Road.
Yeah.
The rest, these are location maps at the 1-inch equals 1,000 scale, showing where each of those signs are located. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners and questions? Patrick?
No questions.
Thank you. Matt?
No, just a quick one. Peter, you sort of answered it. I was driving on Copper Mine today, past the Wilcox property.
Yep.
Is the sign there essentially the same size sign you're going to be putting at these other properties?
So these will be much smaller. That was a 48-inch-wide sign because that's our, that'll be our office.
Yep.
But these are 24-inch wide, where there's hiking trails, and 18-inch wide for the rest of the properties. So much, much smaller.
Sure. No, thank you. All right, good to know. Thanks. I'm good.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Just a little, I want to clarify. So we're looking at the signpost. When it's the smaller sign, the 18 by 13, will the cross the supporting piece? Will that also be shortened? Is that what I'm seeing in the diagram?
Look at the top, that'll be 29 and a half inches across. If you look at the sign panel, there's a dashed line. That represents the smaller-sized sign panel. And above it, the 18 by 13 sign is going to be a 29 and a half inch long horizontal post. So, yeah, it'll be proportional to the sign.
Okay, that's great. And one other quick thing. On the Main Street, that's the big lawn across from the bank, correct?
Yeah.
Does that, does that have a four-by-four post with your little logo on it?
It does. Or six-by-six, yep.
Or six-by-six. Is that going to stay?
We'll be separate, we'll be separate, keep it separate from that.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Mike?
No questions.
And Matthew?
On the paddling pond sign, there is a bus stop nearby there. It's not in any way obstructing that, correct?
No, that's all conduct property. So we were pretty restricted on where we could put the sign. So it's further east of the bus stop. You can see where the conduct right away flares out. So we end up pushing the sign further east and at a downgrade, and that's why we need a taller post.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And James?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, can we have a motion in a second, please, on this application?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application to install identification signs by Farmington Land Trust on Farmington Land Trust properties.
Matt, second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Commissioners? Okay, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 402 Farmington Avenue.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hallstead, Commission members. I'm Attorney Tim Hollister, representing the applicant. The team with me tonight from Metro Realty, Jeff Sager, Phoebe Sager, Ben Tripp, Kyle Richards, and Peter Dunn. Our consulting engineer is Tom Daley from SLR Consulting. Mark Vertugia of Fussin' O'Neill is our traffic engineer. And when we get to it, Jeremy Karen from Maine Blasting will be our blasting consultant. As I think you can see from the agenda, we have a matter under new business, a site plan modification, and then upcoming is one of the public hearings, a special permit for blasting. As to both applications, I thought you might be wondering or asking at the start, why are these applications coming up now? So I thought I'd just give you a brief explanation of that. When we were at, in front of this Commission last year, seeking approvals of the apartment building, you may recall that, or those of you who are on the Commission will recall that we discussed improvements on state land at the site entrance and along Farmington Avenue, principally sidewalks to create pedestrian connectivity between the development and the Yukon Medical Center. So we talked about that as one of the site improvements. What we also knew at that time was that we were headed for a fairly detailed process, multi-layered, I guess you would say, involving Yukon, the State Department of Transportation, and the Attorney General's Office. We also knew that generally the state likes to see the town go first with its approval so that they, they know that there is a town approval, and they know generally what's coming at them. But what we did not know for sure was whether we only needed state approval for the sidewalk or whether we would also have to come back to the town. Long story short, it was determined that we should come back to the town now that we have basically been through the state process, which is another way of saying that everything that you're going to see presented to you tonight has already been reviewed and approved at the, at the state level. So that's just by way of introduction as to why we're here tonight. And at this point, I will turn it over to Tom Daley, our engineer.
Thank you, Tim. As Tim indicated, it's Tom Daley with SLR Consulting. The plan before you, if you look at it, we have Farmington Ave that's running at the bottom of the map, just to the right, lower right-hand corner, that's the existing traffic signal, the entrance to the property. And then off to the, at the, at the plan, at the top of the plan, that's off the, off the sheet, is the, is the, was the approved multifamily building. So this is really that stretch of Quarry Road that comes off of Farmington Ave and comes into the property. The alignment, the overall alignment of this access drive has not changed. That was essentially defined, actually, way back when, when a church was approved at that spec. What we're really, before this Commission, for is to make some enhancements to that, that road design that's, as Tim indicated, through state property. One thing was that there was a, we had a sidewalk that was coming down about middle of the curve. We were crossing over and then jumping onto the other side of the access drive. There was actually, one of the engineering comments was requesting that we take another look at that and see if we can just keep those pedestrians on, on the same side. Now, part of that was done because there was some easements and state approvals were required. This plan revises that, so the sidewalk is all on that, that one side of the driveway. And associated with, when we did that, there is some additional grading on the, basically on, on the upper part of the driveway. Thank you, Shannon. There's some additional grading that was required there to get that sidewalk in. In addition to that, we've taken a look at some other enhancements. So as you know, if you go along Farmington Ave, there's kind of an outcropping of rock that is located between our access drive and Farmington Ave. The proposal for this is to take down that, that kind of rock knob and open up some visibility to the site. It's, it's still, it's not visibility in the sense that you're going to see the multifamily building because there's still a very large distance and a large vegetated wetland corridor that is not being changed. But we're saying we're opening up some visibility to it, just allow people to see the intersection. And we think it's, it's a safety benefit, and also it gets some, some additional land for landscaping in that front area. So we're essentially kind of lowering that. One of the other items that came up is we are doing some utility enhancements. When the church was going in, they put new, brand-new water mains in. But unfortunately, nobody kept records of it. So the MDC has been put in a position where they, there's a water main in the road, but nobody can verify how it was being put in. So we're really, at this plan, is representing new utility improvements that are being put into the road with new utility connections because frankly, we just can't confirm how they were put in. So we're really looking at a revised plan to you, to additional grading associated with the sidewalk, additional grading to open up some views into the access drive, additional grading to provide some additional landscaping, I think, Shannon, the next slide. So as you can see, we've created additional landscaping. We've created an entry statement where we're flagging both sides of the driveway with some landscaping. And actually, when you come in at the T-intersection, we worked with the state to do some enhanced landscaping there. So we've integrated this whole sidewalk landscaping element, and those required some additional grading. But the landscaping enhancements you're seeing here are also part of this, this site plan modification. And Shannon, is there a slide? Yeah, so once again, these are landscape enhancements that we're looking at. And they really required state approval because we're kind of integrating their intersection with our intersection. And I would hope to think the Commission really always was hoping that we would get with the state and kind of make this the unified site plan as you come into the property. Shannon, it looks like there's another slide. And here's a, here's a rendering of what that new entry could potentially look like. With that, Tim, am I turning it back over to you?
I think, is that it for the site plan?
It is.
I believe it is. So that, that's all, Mr. Chair, what we have on the site plan modification.
Thanks very much. Let's go to Commissioners for questions. Patrick?
Yeah, so the material that is being used for the sidewalk, is that concrete?
It is concrete. I believe that was an engineering comment, and it is concrete.
Okay. And there was also a comment about keeping the lighting on the side of the sidewalk. And I did, I don't think that was the case here.
The recommended, right now, it's currently on the opposite side. The, actually, I think it alters. So I think the town comment was, put it all on the sidewalk side. And we have no objection to, to looking at that, but we'll have to consult a lighting expert.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Matt?
Yeah, just one for me. Is there going to, like, plans for the bus or CT Transit to come in here? Is there room for that? Is there any sort of bus stop sections in this new sort of entrance?
There is not an official bus stop. I believe there's a bus pickup on the other side of the street. I think I've seen, I think, Shannon, maybe you can confirm, but I believe I've seen people waiting for the bus over there. But we have not incorporated a bus stop specifically into this, this plan.
Got it. And what type of traffic light will or won't be on, on the entrance here?
So part of, part of this application, we are going to Office of State Traffic Administration and coordinating with them. There will have to be some enhancements to that traffic signal to accommodate this. And it may potentially include pedestrian enhancements also.
Right. That was my next question. Is there a cross, was there a crosswalk, a cross Route 4 at this point? I'm not sure there is.
Mark, are you on the call? Mark Vertugia?
Yeah, I'm here, Tom. Hi, everyone. Mark Vertugia from Fussin', yeah, Fussin' O'Neill. Yes, we do have an application into State Traffic Administration. And, you know, part of that application is modifying the pedestrian signal phasing that exists at, at the intersection with Farmington Avenue. So there, there will be a pedestrian phase there. There'll be new signal equipment with countdown pedestrian timers and push buttons for the pedestrians to cross. And a new crosswalk on the, be the easterly leg of that intersection. So. So right where the, the new sidewalk is coming in that Tom talked about into that northeast corner, right there where the cursor is on the east leg, that's where the, the cross lock will be.
Got it. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Uh, I think my questions have already been asked. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mike?
No questions.
Thanks, Mike. Matthew?
No questions for me, but there is indeed a, a bus stop on that side of the road, not too far from where that main driveway will be going in, so. And there's one on the opposite side as well.
Thank you. James? No questions. All right. No questions for me. Any, can we get a motion in a second?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the site plan modification by four, or at four, at 400 Farmington Avenue to the entrance drive presented by 402 Farmington Avenue LLC.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion, comments, commissioners?
Do we need to add, do we need to add the condition about the, the sidewalk lighting or is that already kind of in it?
You can modify if you want any of those items for consideration specifically added in.
What do you think, Patrick?
Well, I mean, if, if I say as presented, it was mentioned that they were gonna.
That work, that works for me. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, so what do I gotta do here now? I gotta modify, I'd like to modify my, I'd like to modify my motion to include that it, that it is as presented.
And Liz?
Yeah.
I second again.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion or comments? All right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes.
Thank you. We'll be back in a moment.
Thank you.
All right, and we have one, let's see if I'm in the right place, one application to accept. And we have a motion in a second for that, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make it, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Calco Construction, Inc., for a special permit for an 11-lot cluster subdivision, R30 zone, and schedule a public hearing date with a recommended hearing date of September 12th, 2022.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thanks, Patrick and Liz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings. So Shannon, we're now hearing.
So, yeah, so commission, this applicant unfortunately failed to get the notifications completed for their application, both the signposting as well as the mailings that are required. And additionally, even after contact by both Sandy and myself, failed to grant an extension. So the commission will need, I'll need a, a motion, a second and vote. I'm recommending that the commission deny the application. And then the applicant is welcome then to reapply in the fall at that point, so. Well, deny, yes, so deny without prejudice, which would allow them to reapply with the same application in the fall.
So, so the motion would have to say deny without prejudice? Is that what it is?
Right.
Okay. Hi, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to deny without prejudice the special permit to raise poultry, 17 ducks, hens for a property located at 325 A Scott Swamp Road in an R30 zone.
Matt Outfagner, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay.
All right, Carrier Holdings LLC.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd have, I'd like to recuse myself from this one.
Okay. Thanks, Patrick. We'll have to take on the motion challenge here. Thank you.
And Patrick, if you would, you can just turn your camera off while we're discussing this one, if you, if you wouldn't mind. And then when we get back to 402, you can pop it back on.
Oh, yeah, sounds good. I did that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And James, we're gonna have you vote on this application, please.
You got it.
Remember? Thank you, sir. All right, who do we have?
Okay, I believe we have Steve Judas on the phone for this application. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm actually on under Brian Panico's name. He sent me the link and it must be automatic.
That's okay. But it is, it's Steve, correct?
Yes, Steve, Steve, Steve Judas with the Office of Harry Colson. Should I start my presentation now? Are we ready?
Yep, you can go ahead. I've got your presentation slides up, and then I also have your site plans if you want them at any point.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. For the record, my name is Stephen Judas. I'm principal at Harry Colson with offices located at 876 South Main Street in Plansville. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Carrier Holdings LLC for property located at 114 Red Oak Hill Road. This is a 3.16 acre parcel. It's a zoned R30, and it currently has an existing home, which is shown by that dark brown square on the property. The site is mostly wooded, just, just a house and a driveway exists. The house is currently serviced by onsite sewer and well. And the property has furnished on Red Oak Hill Road. It's abutted by residential property to the west, and we have a residential subdivision that was approved by this commission approximately a year, a year and a half ago to the north. And then some, the lineal trail to the, to the east and another residential property to the east. The topography on this site generally runs from west to east, and it's a gently sloping is the way I would describe it. And the existing site drainage drainage still runs in that direction. We are proposing a four-lot private road residential subdivision. One lot would be the existing home, and then there would be three additional lots as outlined on the plan. The, all these, the lots are all minimum 30,000 square feet as required. We're proposing conservation easements around the perimeter of the lots, with the exception that we're proposing to bring in some sewer and water from the north. The, we're proposing, Shannon just noted, the, there's sewer and water that comes into the parcel to the north, which is owned by the applicant, and we're proposing to extend that sewer and water up into this parcel and connect the three proposed houses and the existing house to that sewer and water system. And that would be owned and maintained by homeowners association. That would be combined with the piece to the north that was previously approved. Stormwater has been collected through a series of catch basins and, and then is directed to the east into a detention basin. And we're also collecting roof leaders into infiltration units, so we can get some LID on the site. And we do meet the town of Farmington's drainage requirements for the site. And it's a small little site, but we, we like the way it worked out. And we do have some, we have received comments from staff. We've submitted one set of revised plans, and we have received some additional comments that we, we're in the process of addressing. So for tonight, we're gonna, I, I, I think we're, it's in order to continue this. We did submit a request to continue this meeting to the next, to the next hearing. So that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's go to the questions. Matt, you're up first.
Thank you. Is there any sidewalks in this new private road?
We're not proposing any sidewalks on this road, no.
Got it. Okay. And, and I'm just curious, like what, why a private road versus making it like a town official road?
I think it's just the, the private road lets us to come in with something that's a, a little more environmentally sensitive, less impervious surface. It's a little more of a, I hate to say driveway, but it's, it's more homier feeling, I think, than a, than a, than a public road. And it just less pavement.
Yeah, the only other question I have is about the engineering comments, but those sound like they're still being sort of worked on. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Uh, yes, you were proposing a conservation easement around where there is space. About how much of the, that is the darker green, I'm assuming on the, on the, that?
No. I'm sorry, if I just couldn't, the darker green is actually the proposed clearing limits for the site. The conservation easement runs perpendicular, or parallel to the, to this, the westerly and northerly property lines on the site.
Oh, okay. I see.
And I apologize, I don't have the exact square footage of the, I'm sorry, it's 0.35 acres, it's 10.7% is, is the open space. I do have it.
Okay, but, so the dark green is the, is the clearing, that's the limit of clearing, correct? So you're gonna maintain that area?
Yep.
Okay. And I just want to make sure I heard this right. Would the existing house also be switched to sewer and water or would it stay on its current well?
It's proposed to be switched to sewer and water.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Mike?
No questions.
Thanks, Mike. Matthew?
Um, just about traffic, that part of town, it's pretty heavy traffic. I understand it's only three additional houses, but what can we expect in terms of additional cars or travels?
I don't have an estimate. I mean, we have, we're proposing three additional homes on the site, and you can, I can assume that there'll be a minimum of two, two, two cars per house. And I would assume there'll be working, working, a working couple at each home. So I can get you some numbers at the next hearing, but I don't anticipate a, a large amount of traffic from this, this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. James?
Uh, no questions for me either.
Great, thanks, James. So we'll open it up for public comment.
And we did receive written comments, and I just want to make sure. Or some. So this was shared with the commission prior. It was also shared with the applicant. And just gonna note for the record that it's a neighbor of the property, a Katarina Oldchewski is in opposition to the subdivision. I'm not gonna read it into the record, but it's showing here on the screen, it's captured in the recording, and it has been shared with the commission in advance of the meeting. So with that, we will open it up to public comment. And anyone that has called into the meeting wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of this application may raise their hand using the feature in Zoom to alert us that you want to make comment, and you will be called upon to address the commission. So again, anyone that's wishing to make comment either in favor or in opposition to this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom so that you may address the commission. Mr. Chair, there is one. Hi, Kat Olachewski, if you would identify yourself with your property address and address your comments to the commission, please.
Hi, this is Hazel Kazieko, 11 Coppermine Road. We're bordering a corner of this property.
Okay. Do you have a question or comment for the commission?
Just a question. First of all, this is, this was or is highly populated with brownstone that they've used in the past for different buildings. So we're just questioning as far as for both this parcel and the parcel to the north that was approved, is there gonna be blasting or possibility of blasting?
I can, this is Tom Planner-Rutherford, I can address that. I don't, I'm not sure test bits have been done, but if blasting is required in order to put the utilities in or do the foundations for the homes, then a separate blasting permit and public hearing will be required.
Okay, the reason why is because most people around here, a lot of people around here do have wells and septic, also foundations, obviously.
Certainly. So yes, the blasting permit is required, it requires a public hearing, and there's a whole separate regulation regarding that. So notifications are, are made, and there is an opportunity, depending upon the residence distance from the blasting area for surveys to be done prior to blasting if the homeowner so wishes.
And also, there was the property north, but they did speak about that has four houses going in also. Is this basically a mirror image of what that is?
Are there, again, this is Tom Planner-Rutherford, so that development was approved a number of years ago.
Yes.
I wanna say.
It appears to be, it appears to be.
It's similar, there, there's different, it, it was a single lot, and now there will be four homes on it based on the approval that's in place. That's the similarity.
Okay. Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, if there's anyone that has called in wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to the application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission or ask your questions. All right, I'll ask one last time. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised at this time. So you can see if, if any other commission members have a question, but I will ask that this be continued, please.
Commissioners, any other questions? So Shannon, we're gonna look for a motion to continue to September 12th.
That is correct.
Okay. Can we get a motion to continue? And a second, please?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the application for four-lot re-subdivision of 114 Red Oak Hill Road from Carrier Holdings LLC, R30 zone, to September 12th.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Matt. For a second?
Mike Walsh, second.
Thanks, Mike. Any comments or discussion, commissioners? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? All right, motion passes. We'll, we'll talk to you again September 12th.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Welcome Patrick back to the.
Yeah, we can welcome Mr. Carrier back.
Back into the meeting.
There we go. All right. Back on, and.
Back to 402 Farmington Avenue.
Yes, so Attorney Hollister, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening again, Chairman Hollister and Commissioner.
Thank you, uh, good evening, uh, again, Chairman Hollister and Commission members, uh, Tim Hollister, attorney representing the applicant, uh, just to shorten things up, I will ask to, uh, I think the phrase is incorporate my earlier remarks about who's here and why we're addressing this, uh, part of the appli- overall application at this point, and turn it over to Mr. Daly.
Thank you, Attorney Hollister. Uh, once again, it's, uh, Tom Daly with SLR, like, uh, Tim, um, uh, my previous comments, but we thought we'd go through them, it is a, you know, different application, so the, the grading we presented to you, uh, a few moments ago, those are enhancements to provide for the sidewalk, get the utilities in, and, um, create some additional landscaping area. Um, as you know, this area is, I'm sure everybody on this commission is driven by this many time, uh, is populated by some rock, so as part of your regulations, we have to come back before this commission with a separate application for rock removal. Um, so we are, primarily the, the rock removal, there'll be a little bit for the utilities, but primarily it's, it's to remove the rock, um, that, that rock kind of knob that you see when you go along Farmington Ave. And then there's some additional rock removal on the backside to get that sidewalk in and slope up there. Um, the, this area will be removed through blasting, except there is a small amount of rock removal that occurs between the DOT or the street line and the curb line to Farmington Ave. That, it's maybe, you know, a ten foot strip and it tapers down. That area will be removed by mechanical means and not by blasting. Um, small nuance, but, uh, it's our belief that, uh, that, that type of rock removal is more appropriate to be done by mechanical means, which is essentially adjacent to, um, adjacent to the roadway. Um, but ultimately, um, the grading is the same plan that was presented to you. It's essentially lowering that, uh, that area to create some visibility into the site. Um, so it'll be a combination of earth removal and rock removal, but, uh, primarily, uh, rock removal in this, this general area. I think, uh, Shannon, next slide? So once again, it's for, uh, this was the landscaping slide that we showed you. So also part of the rock removal is, is removing enough rock that we can get good soil in there and get those, um, tree roots into good soil, um, so they can flourish. Next slide? Um, this is the, uh, slide that's showing, um, generally the two white areas are shown, showing the area, um, of rock removal, but really the, the white swath is, is primarily the, um, the roadway network. Yeah, Shannon, that's, uh, so it's those two areas, so there might be some rock removal to just slope out that back area and get the utilities, and then the front areas to lower the grade. Uh, with that, I'm gonna, um, ask Jeremy, who is our blasting expert, to, uh, present after me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, this is Jeremy Karen, I'm a manager for Main Drilling and Blasting, and as Tom said, I'll just kind of talk us through at a high level the second phase for the, uh, blasting on Farmington Ave. Um, the area in white is the approximate areas that we think will have some blasting to do for the grading or for the utilities. The blasting will start to the rear of the site, furthest away from Route four, four Farmington Road, and be orientated toward the back of the site, away from the existing roadway and existing buildings. Um, all blasting will be heavily matted. Um, eh, eh, and the, as we progress back towards, uh, the existing Route four, we will have two versions of our site security, which is our, our procedures we put in place to make sure that there's nobody in harmed way for any blasting event. Uh, it's a little hard to see zoomed out, but that's okay, there, there'll be people in, in parking lots at, at both sides of the existing uh, butters, uh, for each round of blasting to ensure that nobody comes out of one of the facilities or, or is driving through the parking lot at, at the time of a blast. Um, as we work back closer to Route four, we're eventually gonna get to the point where we have to have a momentary stoppage of traffic on Route four. And we'll be actually controlling the, the parking lots on the other side of Route four, just to make sure that nobody comes right out into our blast area during the time of the blast. These, these interruptions will be momentarily. Uh, we have a, a five minute warning that we sound for all of our blast events. During that five minute warning is when our sentries or our guards will be walking into position. If we are having to stop traffic for that round of blasting, that's the same time that the police will stop the traffic on Route four. Within that five minute window, the blast will be initiated. Um, and again, this, this traffic stoppage or our, our guards or sentries out in these, in these parking lots or public areas are just there for safety procedures. We don't expect anything to leave our blast area. We don't expect any rock to be in any parking lots, we don't expect anything to be into Route four. And that's why the owner is elected to take out the last sliver of rock right along Route four by mechanical methods and not do blasting, uh, just to increase the, the safety of, of the project. Um, we additionally will have seismographs that are monitoring all of our blast vibrations and air overpressures, those are those yellow boxes on each of the three structures. Those are our three closest points, so they will be there for all rounds of blasting. When we are blasting and having to affect traffic on Farmington Ave, we're going to limit those blast, uh, times to, to non heavy commute hours, so we'll do that in the off-peak traffic times to not cause any major interruptions with traffic early in the morning or later in the day. Um, I pretty much think that's all that I have on my end. Again, this is just an extension of the first phase and the continuation of the process. If there's any questions specific to the blasting, I can be happy to entertain them.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all we have as far as our presentation.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll, uh, go to the commissioners for questions. Patrick?
Yeah, how long does something like this take? Uh, how many, I guess, how many times is Route four gonna have to be, um, closed down? Uh, momentarily, I know they closed it down momentarily, or just for a small amount of time, but is it five, six times, something like that?
I would think twice a day. I would expect a blast, you know, late morning and, and early afternoon on the outside of the peak traffic hours.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, Matt?
Can you, can you walk me through how the not- excuse me, the notification system works to, I don't know, area residents or businesses, do they get a letter, do they, uh, get a text message that morning? How, how does that work?
You have a, well, two processes. One is rather crude, it's just an air horn that's actually sounded right before the blast on the site. We also offer to anybody that wants to be on it to be on a call list, and we will robo-call whoever we want to be on this call list and give them a window of a blast, and our blaster will call the office, the office will initiate the calls, and you'll get a robotic call that says in your area, there'll be a blast at this address between ten and ten thirty, or whatever, whatever the time may be. And anybody could be on that notification.
Got it. Hey, uh, could you describe, like, describe how loud this blast would sound? Is it Fourth of July fireworks? I just, I don't have any concept of it, so maybe you can shed some light on that for me?
The, the way that I, I like to describe blasting, and I know we get that question all the time, it, I would say is similar to a clap of thunder. Um, there, there is, there is a noise, and there's also a feeling, the ground vibration that you will get a sensation from, so the best way I could describe is a clap of thunder. It's over in less than half of a second, and it, similar to like a gunshot, it's, it's that, it's that quick.
Got it. Okay, uh, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz? Can we lose those?
Liz, are you still there?
Uh, I, I was gonna ask about the duration of, of things, um, I'm here, can you see me, hear me?
There you go, yeah, go ahead.
You're good.
Hello? Yeah, okay, it's, hey, we just heard thunder, so who knows?
Yeah, now we're hearing, getting rain and stuff too, so, yep.
So I'll do the best I can. Uh, I think all my questions have been asked, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Mike?
No questions.
Thank you, Matthew?
No questions.
And James?
All set.
Okay. No questions for me?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I have a follow-up question to, uh, Commissioner Carrier, Commissioner Carrier's question about the number of blasts. I know it was indicated two times per day. Do we have an idea, understanding the area that needs to be worked on? How many days of likely blasting? And I understand that at times it's not consecutive days, but how many days do we think they actually will need to blast?
Um, Tom, I'm going off of memory here, yeah, I think we were saying this is about two weeks in total worth of work, is that, is that correct?
Well, I, I do, I agree, that's the, what the team, uh, anticipated, and it's not two weeks of, of, uh, and, and that's not including weekend work. But yes, I think we're, Shannon, we're expecting about two weeks of work.
Okay, so that's including blasting and drilling days?
Yes.
Or, or ten days of blasting?
Is that fourteen or ten days?
No, it wouldn't be fourteen, because they can't.
Ten days, we're thinking ten days of drilling and blasting activity, ten days of drilling and blasting activity.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm not, if it ends up twelve, I'm not, i- it's just trying to understand, are we at two, ten days, or I'm at, you know, twenty business days or thirty business days, it's just an order of magnitude understanding, thank you.
No, no, I think the team felt comfortable at the ten day mark.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have a question, actually. Do you know when this is scheduled to happen roughly?
Yeah, I can answer that. This is Ben Tripp, uh, with Metro Realty, so we're currently on site, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, you're set, Ben.
Okay, so we're currently on site, uh, with, uh, what Jeremy referred to as Phase One of the blasting, it's up in the area of the approved, uh, apartment building. Uh, that, it should be complete on Wednesday or Thursday of this week. And we're hoping to, to, you know, quickly roll right into this second phase, so, uh, as, or as soon as next week.
Thank you.
Hey Scott, just a quick question.
Sure.
So Shannon, just for me, for information, the fire marshal is sort of on site and is managing the safety from like a town perspective, right?
Um, the fire marshal is on site, the fire marshal is not managing the safety. The blaster is responsible for the safety of the site.
Okay.
Period. Um, uh, the fire marshal is there to observe the blast, and he records the readings, and the fire marshal issues the blast permit to the blaster. So i- it's a state permit, and the fire marshal issues that to the blaster, so there are requirements and licensing that the fire marshal is looking at that's different from what the TPZ is looking at, we're looking at it really to ensure from a notification standpoint.
Yeah, no, that, that's what I figured, I just wanted to ask, I, I, I assume too, like, we're sort of in this drought conditions, right? I'm sure that's something the fire marshal ma- may look at, I, I assume, I don't know.
Uh, i- i- interestingly, there's, there's, and, uh, I'll, I'll defer to the blaster. I don't believe there's a, a fire concern, so we don't have the fire department on standby for these.
Okay.
Uh, I don't believe there's a fire concern with this, it's a little, it's, um, different mechanism that's used for the ignition, but the, the blaster could address that if, if he would.
No, that's correct, they, we're not concerned over like a pyrotechnic type of response, where we have a lot of burning or consuming, uh, consume materials. Uh, and, and the areas that we will be working in will be either dirt or rock, all the vegetation and, and flammable, uh, products would be removed from the site before we took it over as, as the blasting contractor.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
We, if you're set, Mr. Chair, I will go to, so again, we will ask for, uh, public comment. So if you have called in and, uh, wish to make public comment regarding uh, this matter, we ask that you please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom so that you may be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, I will ask again, this is, uh, public comment for the four oh two Farmington Ave application for the special permit for blasting, if you have called in for this matter and wish to make public comment, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom so you can be acknowledged, and you may address the commission then. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Any last questions, commissioners? Any additional questions?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, um, so in the agenda review, there were a couple items, um, for consideration. Is that, were those like engineering comments, is that something we need to mention? Um, and, and does the applicant, are they opposed to them, they know about them, I guess, kind of a broad question to whoever?
So I can say that this, the agenda review is shared with, uh, with you, and it is trying to remember if I got these out to the applicant last week, um, but they, there were comments about having additional blast mats on site uh, for use over the blast area as needed, and the use of, uh, water the blast area daily to limit dust transport offsite.
This, I, this, yeah, Shannon, I saw, I did see those, uh, engineering comments, and we have no objection.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. Any other, uh, questions, commissioners, before we close the hearing? Okay. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Um, can we get a motion in a second, please?
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by four oh two Farmington Ave LLC for a special permit for blasting at four hundred Farmington Ave in a BR zone.
Matt Hugtugner, second.
Thank you, guys. Any discussion commissioners? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For calling in this evening. Okay, uh, this next one is me, yes, uh, it's Town of Farmington. Uh, so this is Shannon Rutherford, Town Planner for Farmington. The application, uh, to be discussed next is a zoning text amendment to modi- modify Article Two, Section eleven to add church as a special permit use to the business restricted zone. Um, and as outlined in the, uh, agenda review, that our, our BR, or business restricted zone, is typically a transitional zone between residential and B one uses. Uh, and interestingly, we have found that the church use is allowed as a special permit use in the single-family residential zones, and it is also allowed in the business one zone as a special permit use. And it, for whatever reason, would, had not been included in the BR, a transitional zone, so it's allowed in the more restrictive and less restrictive, uh, zones that it borders, but not in itself, so um, the request before you is to allow the church use to be added, and we're suggesting it just be added into the first special permit use that's itemized in the BR zone. And it will change that, that line item then from school, college, public and private school to church, school, college, public and private school. Um, and really this came up, we have some landowners that are in the BR zone that have larger office spaces and/or mixed-use spaces, and have had churches approach them to be able to utilize the space for services, whether they're weeknight or weekend services. And we don't have a mechanism to allow them to, to do that. Um, and again, it's, it would allow for that repurposing as a special permit use. It does come before the commission, if it's an existing site, typically what we've been doing as of late is to bring it on under a planner's report for the commission to decide if it's intense enough that it requires its own special permit hearing, uh, and public hearing, or if it's, uh, minor enough compared to what the overall complex is already approved for, but nonetheless, that use doesn't go in without some commer- um, commission oversight, and it is ultimately your decision if you want to hold a public hearing on it. So even if it's repurposing, of course, if it's a brand new one, and then it's gonna come before you for a whole new development. So, so that's the, what we're looking to do and why we're looking to do it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Patrick, any questions?
Uh, no questions, I mean. I have no questions. I mean, it makes sense to me. No questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Matt?
No questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
It seems like a logical step. No questions.
Mike? Thanks, Liz. Mike?
No questions.
Thanks, Mike. Matt? Matthew?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
James?
No questions.
Yeah, it seems to make sense to me too, Shannon. I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, we will if it's you're agreeable, we'll go to public comment.
Please do, yeah.
Okay. So again, this is a public hearing item on the agenda. So if anyone's called in to offer questions or comments. Regarding this text amendment change, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, I will ask again if anyone's called in regarding the text amendment change. For public hearing comments, who please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Mister Chair, there's no hands raised.
Thank you. Any other one last check on questions, Commissioners? Before we. See head nods, okay. So we'll close the public hearing. And ask for a motion in a second, please.
Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by the Town of Farmington. For a zoning text amendment to modify Article Two, Section eleven, to add church as a special permit use. To the business restricted zone.
Matt Hugtugner, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, let's take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
All right.
Very good.
Okay. If I may, I'll introduce the next item. So we have Jeff and Phoebe Sager on the phone, as well as some of their colleagues. To address the commission in with an informal discussion item for a housing development they're considering. On eighty South Road. So with that, I don't know Jeff or Phoebe, which one of you is taking the lead. But please feel free to introduce yourselves and and get started.
Good evening. First of all, can you hear me, Shannon?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Chairman Halsted, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Jeff Sager. I live at fifteen White Oak Road. It's late, so I will be brief. So we wanted to informally introduce you to a mixed income housing proposal. This is a proposal from Sager Development, which is comprised of my daughter Phoebe, who is an architect. With experience in the field of mixed income housing and me. The new address for the proposed site is eighty South Road. It's in the Health Center neighborhood. So the site is on the south side of South Road between Middle or Patrick Flood and Munson. South Road is a state road. It's the Route Nine bypass for cars leaving the center and looking to travel south on Route Nine. Many people use South Road to enter the back of the medical center or to go to West Farms Mall. The parcel we're here to discuss is two point nine acres. One point four one acres is zoned B one. One point four nine acres is zoned R forty. So this is a long and linear site. It varies in width, but it's about a hundred and forty feet deep. And it's almost eleven hundred feet wide. It's a combination of three parcels. One that was formerly a Barberino owned parcel, where the commission approved a small medical office. It was formerly a DOT, one parcel was formerly a DOT parcel that was approved for a restaurant. And then all the way at the west end was a blighted single family home that was demolished in the spring of twenty twenty two. So the parcel is bounded by South Road to the north. The East Farms Firehouse to the east. The I eighty four connector to the south. And on the west is a vacant single family home parcel. And then further west of that is a single family home, we believe is a rental property.
Shannon, we're on slide five.
In October, we would like to propose an affordable housing zone tailored specifically to this proposal. So a site specific affordable housing zone that would not apply anywhere else in town. We believe this is a suitable site for mixed income rental housing because of its proximity to transportation. Including a fast track bus stop that's less than half a mile away. There's a lot of employment in this area. The medical services are great. And you have walking proximity to the schools at East Farms in Irving Robbins. There's also miles of contiguous sidewalks in the Health Center neighborhood. The nearest grocery stores are about two and a half miles away, and there's three of them. There's the Stop and Shop in West Hartford, the Aldi in New Britain, and Trader Joe's at Corbin's Corner. So as is the case with the other four mixed income housing that I've partnered to develop in town. These proposed apartment homes will be eligible under Section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut statutes. And importantly, will be counted toward the townwide goal of ten percent affordable housing. Excuse me one second. So to qualify towards the town's goal of the ten percent. At least fifteen percent of the homes must be affordable at eighty percent of area median income. And fifteen percent of the units must be affordable at sixty percent of area median income. Our goal with this proposal is to achieve eighty percent affordability, twenty percent market rate. So substantially greater affordability than the minimum just described. And to do so will require financing through different state agencies. All of the homes in this development, even the market rate homes, will qualify toward the town's ten percent. And the reason for that is because they're proposed to be financed with CHFA and the Department of Housing. I'd like to spend a minute describing the financing. Even if this proposal earns its land use approvals, there are very steep challenges to piece together the financing. It would require low income housing tax credits from CHFA. A low interest rate loan from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing, DOH. And the process of applying for this funding is very formalized and it's extremely competitive. If we receive our land use approvals, we would submit these applications in January twenty twenty three. And that's the one time in twenty twenty three that these agencies will receive applications. The number of units we're proposing has been very carefully considered. And it's a function of both the land and the land use, but also a function of the financing we're applying for. We're proposing enough units to absorb very large fixed costs of the development, the financing, the ongoing management. But not so many units as to overtax the subsidy resources available to us. In the event we're not successful with our application for financing in twenty twenty three. We will apply, we will apply again in succeeding years. Another goal of ours with this proposal is to enter into a long term contract for fifteen affordable homes with FAVR. Twelve of these fifteen homes are proposed to be one bedroom and three are proposed to be two bedroom. FAVR is a nonprofit headquartered in Canton that serves Farmington Valley residents with developmental disabilities. I have known FAVR for quite a while. For the for the past ten years, FAVR residents have occupied a similar number of units. In an affordable housing development we constructed in Avon, known as Old Farms Crossing. The FAVR residents are busy during the day with work and other commitments. There are small buses that assist them with their transportation needs. Some FAVR residents work at the health center. And overall, the proximity to medical services in this neighborhood is very important to them. The FAVR organization provides onsite around the clock support of between one and three persons. Who do not live in the units, but rather work from an office in the building onsite. We met with Nancy Parent of the Farmington Housing Authority to introduce this proposal. We've worked extensively with the Housing Authority through the years to house families from the waitlist in our mixed income communities. Ms. Parent promised us a letter of support when we file our application. These affordable units will be in very high demand. And although we cannot give priority to Farmington residents, in the past. We've given priority to persons on the Farmington Housing Authority waitlist. I'm not certain that fair housing laws still allow that. So I will have to research that question and I will have an answer when we apply formally in October. We consider the Health Center neighborhood the best location for medical services in all of central Connecticut. And should this proposal become a reality, for those units not proposed to be occupied by FAVR residents. We would welcome the opportunity to provide homes for persons with serious or specialized medical needs. Who would benefit by proximity to the medical center and the extensive surrounding medical services. Many individuals and families find themselves with low incomes specifically because of medical disabilities. Or acute or chronic conditions. I'd like to turn now to the plan. So turning to the site plan, we are proposing two buildings with sixty two rental homes. One of the buildings has thirty five units, one of the buildings has twenty seven. The buildings present as three story buildings. We are very excited about the building elevations conceived by our architects, Laura Crossky and her father Bill. We think they did an incredible job in designing elevations that respect the traditional sensibilities of Farmington. While introducing contemporary design elements, elements you see on newer buildings in the Health Center neighborhood. They were also able to make two very different buildings look very similar. So moving to Building A. So Building A is a thirty five unit building. It has central corridors and an elevator. Four units are built into a half story at the roof line. So there's a partial fourth story, but it presents from the street. As a three story building with a pitched or gabled roof. It would have two studio homes, eleven one bedroom homes, twenty one two bedroom homes, one three bedroom home. Building B. Is a three story building, different building type. So here we have direct entry, townhouse style building, no central corridors, no elevator. On the first floor, you have nine one bedroom units. And on the second and third floor, you have eighteen townhouse type style units. So that's a two story unit stacked at the second floor. So we are in the process of putting the plans together, but just to talk about some of the common. Space in these buildings. There'll be a community room, there'll be a package room, a mail kiosk, two private offices and a conference room. Washer dryer hookups in the homes, accessible laundry on the first floor, outdoor amenity space of forty two hundred square feet. We do have a wetland area between the two buildings. We're set back twenty five feet from that. We're not proposing any wetland filling. And the wetlands area includes a channel from an outlet pipe from the wetlands to the north of this parcel. So the water flows through our site onto the DOT right of way that's at the connector. We're proposing a sidewalk along the site frontage. It's going to run over a thousand feet. The buildings will include a lot of green features and we will review them in detail when we formally present this proposal in October. The term of affordability we're proposing is thirty years. And finally, we'll perform all the compliance monitoring for the income level of the residents. And the affordability of the asking rents. And then we will submit a report at the end of each calendar year to town staff. So these same compliance activities that we monitor. Are audited every year by CPA firm, CHFA and DOH. And I believe over the years, that as the owner doing all the compliance monitoring and administration of this program. Unlike the for sale housing where the administrative burden falls to the town staff. I think it's very helpful that we do it all and it's not a burden for the town staff. So to conclude, I would just offer that. I've had the extraordinary privilege of partnering on four other mixed income apartment communities in Farmington. Which we continue to own and manage to this day. And each required close collaboration with the zoning commission and with staff. And we hope to do so with this proposal as well. So thank you very much for taking the time to hear this presentation.
Thank you very much. And Phoebe, thank you both. We can, yeah, absolutely go through the commission. If there's any questions or comments, now's a great time to. Have a dialogue outside of a public hearing setting.
Yeah, this is our preview of the project, Commissioners. So Patrick, any thoughts, questions?
No, just sounds great. Looks great. No, no questions in particular.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Just quick, clarify the number of units for me. I think there was fifteen and then here there's sixty two. I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Sure, there's sixty two units, thirty five in one building, twenty seven in the other. I think the number fifteen I used was the number of FAVR units.
Got it.
So those are within the domain, if you will, of the affordable units, which is going to be eighty percent of the development. There will be fifteen units set aside for FAVR residents.
Got it. So fifteen of the sixty two.
Yeah, of the sixty two, thirteen will be market rate. So what's that math? Forty nine?
Sure.
So what's fifteen of the forty nine, roughly a third, roughly a third.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Uh, yeah, question, just talking about some of the FAVR units and the medical conditions people might have. Are you planning on making these all, all the units ADA, you know, following ADA requirements? Are you going to just mix some in? How's that going to work?
Yeah, so the way it will work is that Building A will be completely either accessible or adaptable. Ten percent of the units will be accessible. Day one, the rest will be adaptable. In the other building on the first floor. All those units will be adaptable and ten percent of the units overall in the entire development will be accessible. So basically, the only units that aren't adaptable are those two story townhouses. And I can spend more time on that. It's a little outside of the box, this proposal in terms of. You know, stacking a townhouse starting at the second floor, but you can see how that's not going to work for accessibility. So those are the only units. Those eighteen units are the only units that couldn't be adapted.
Well, it it seems like you're already thinking about that and the issues that ADA requirements are bring up. So no, it sounds interesting.
Thanks, Liz. Mike?
No questions.
Thank you. Matthew?
Could you just go to slide eleven, please? So first off, it's it's very interesting, but I am interested into knowing about the other mixed income units that you've worked with the town. I can get that from planning staff, but just curious if you could go into that a little bit.
Absolutely. So we developed Heritage. I was a partner. My partner is Peter Dunn. They were developed by Metro Realty. So Heritage Glen is located just west of the old Five Corners, which is the intersection of Route Six and Phenomenon Road, and it's across from a recent multifamily luxury complex we built called two ninety-nine. But in any event, that was sixty-eight units. That was built in nineteen ninety-nine, and when we built it, it won from the National Association of Home Builders Best Multifamily Affordable in the Nation that year. Further down Route Six on the west side of one seventy-seven, we developed a thirty-four unit affordable housing complex called West Woods. That's a hundred percent affordable. I didn't say on Heritage Glen. Heritage Glen is sixty percent market rate, forty percent affordable. West Woods is a hundred percent affordable, and that is, as you're driving west into Bristol, that is on the right side, so that'd be the north side. When you are in Unionville, if you come out of the center of Unionville, go over the bridge and take that right, excuse me, I forget the name of the road. Railroad, yeah. Hunter's Ridge is a fifty-three unit senior affordable housing development that we built, I guess nineteen years ago, eighteen years ago. And then the fourth one is right outside the back of the medical center, and it's called Yorkshire, and it's at the intersection of Munson and Middle Road. And that's a ninety-one unit complex. And, you know, we're in it forever, basically, generationally. So we have no, we're not going to sell it. We have no plans to sell it. We have no plans to make plans to sell them. We're we're in this for the long term, and Heritage also was recently renovated top to bottom. You know, right when they get to that twenty twenty-five year, we look at keeping up and, you know, doing a whole renovation. So we're proud owners and, yeah, we've had them for a while.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
Sure.
Thanks, Matthew. James?
No questions for me. Thanks.
All right, thanks, James. Yeah, I mean, I I agree with the the other commissioners. I think it looks interesting. Appreciate Jeff, the sneak peek, the sneak preview here of what's to come in October, and look forward to seeing more in detail.
Okay. Well, thank you again for taking the time. I really appreciate it.
So thank you for coming in. I appreciate it.
Okay, good night.
Good night. Planers report, I have just one quick thing to let you folks know about, just more as an FYI. So when you see this come in or see construction starting, you know where it's coming from. Let's see here. My Farmington map up. Okay. A number of years ago, one sixty-nine Main Street was in for permitting, as was the main gate subdivision. One sixty-nine, I don't believe, had to come directly for TPZ. It came in for Farmington Historic District. The original house had burnt down, and then there's a it came through Historic District for the reconstruction of a new home. The developer has an interested purchaser. The developer, when they came through Historic District, requested four foot picket fence around the property. The homeowner has small children and a dog, I believe. They're requesting a five foot fence. Our regulation requires four foot fence in the front yard unless a waiver is granted by the commission. We've gone back in history and found that a waiver had already been granted to the prior owner for a six foot fence. So this fence is going to be less than the six feet. So we're good. There's a waiver on file. We're good. So it's this is an FYI. So when you start seeking construction here at one sixty-nine, it has been reviewed. We're looking at all these details as they come through. We went through a few of them with the Historic District last week, so they were up to date as well. But we should be signing off on building permits here in the the next couple of days and hopefully start to see some activity there. So that's an FYI. So when you see some activity, you know, because I don't think any of you were around when this came through originally. So and that's it. That's all I have for a, oh, and Dollar Tree open, which I think everybody is aware of.
They're going to ask about the bridge in Dollar Tree.
The bridge in Dollar Tree. So the bridge, yeah, so Dollar Tree is open, not without a little pushing and pulling along the way, but we got there. So they opened last week and and then the bridge is doing its bridge thing. It's frying. It's now looks like the State Park Marshmallow Man blew up on it at the moment, but they're finishing and progressing on that. Yeah. I don't I don't have anything else on that, but if there's any other questions for me, I'm I'm happy to entertain them.
Shannon, I'm just going to chime in. They've started cleaning, clearing of the lot on Main Street, I noticed.
Okay.
And and my daughter just went to Dollar Tree this afternoon and said it was quite lovely.
First hand advantage, second hand advantage.
Perfect. That's great.
Just just quick for me. I know I've asked about this, but we won't meet in August about the Charles House. I know school's going to be starting obviously in a month. Anything interesting going on there?
Uh, they are still working through. They're still working through some environmental items. We do have plans in that have addressed planning and zoning and and staff comments. We're about halfway through looking at that. I've compared them. I've benchmarked the plans against the Inland Wetlands comments, and I've benchmarked them against TPZ. Due to the nature of the comments that Wetlands and TPZ had, a lot of it's dependent on DEP finalizing and and approving their environmental plan. It's referred to as a environmental use restriction for the property, and it's a encapsulation plan that's being proposed. So that is where that stands at the moment and being reviewed with DEP. So a lot of the responses to the Inland Wetlands and TPZ comments are, we will do, or we may do, or we might. So a lot of it, they've they've taken the time to think about it, but they it's really predicated on what DEP says. And then once DEP finishes, then they can finish more of some of the monitoring and requirements that we requested. But we're about halfway through looking through those plans that came in and hope to finish those in a week, week and a half. So but as far as when they may start some activity, we do not have a date yet.
Yeah, and there's there's no there's no plans. The site plan isn't changing where they need to come back in front of us, right, at this point?
At this particular point in time, that is correct. There are no changes to the plan.
Thank you.
And I did have one other thing. I know, I apologize, under planners report, I know at the last meeting when I had to be away, the opt-out provision was discussed and voted on, and thank you, obviously, thank you to Bruce, taking care of this in my absence, but thank you to all of you for for that discussion. And I know there was comments and concerns regarding the accessory apartment regulation. We have started to take a look at it. What I think I'll do is work with Garrett and get some joining municipality regulations that may be in place and might be appropriate for all of you to start to take a look at, and then we can start to, they they can be modified. We just have to understand, you know, for every action, being an engineer, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction, right? And so that's why I look at all of these things from like a physics standpoint. So we just have to be mindful of when we change something, what does that mean, both the pros and cons of it. So we absolutely can, I'm thinking, taking a look at what some other communities have done might be helpful. And we can do some that are adjacent to us and some that are are further away. So you get a flavor for what some folks are doing. Many of the communities are are taking the opt-out. Some are opting to do their own regulation and some are not. So we can do that. We'll get that distributed. And then in the fall, if folks want to offer comments and suggestions, then we can collectively kind of chip away at this and start to rework what what you think you want this to look like if you if you do want changes made. So I did want to comment on that. I know it was on my, it was on the agenda review. I hadn't made a note of it, so I apologize. So so that's that is all I have unless there's any other questions for me.
Anyone else? They're ready for the break, I think.
Ready for that to be done?
Running for August and partisan.
I guess we have a few weeks off, and we've all learned it.
So last on the agenda here is approving the minutes. Can we get a motion in a second, please?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Liz, stand for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinctions? We are on break.
See everyone September twelfth. Enjoy your August.
Enjoy the time, folks.
See y'all.
All right, take care, guys.
Have a good night.